Reverend Shelton and myself are in the briefing room, so we are available.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Sprouls, do you mind going ahead?
Follow in prayer, please. Most gracious God and Father, we thank you for being our God and for loving us and for caring for us. We thank you for leading us and guiding us. We thank you most of all for being our God. Lord, we pray that the things we say here in this council will bring glory to you, and we pray the things that we do will help the citizens of our city and our area. We pray, Heavenly Father, for your heart, that we might learn to love, in Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen. Item number one, consider a second amended EOC agreement between ODC and the food bank. Mr. Burnett?
Good morning, can everyone hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you all for, I know you've got a lot going on, and I appreciate your time this morning. The ODC did meet last, I guess it was, I don't remember what day it was, they did have a meeting, it was posted, and everyone attended the full board, received the information and a recommendation for a compliance committee. I'm hoping you have the information in the letter from Libby Campbell, the director of the food bank, talking about the situation out there, and a possible expansion of their facility for a walk-in freezer-cooler to keep perishable items for a longer amount of time, and to adequately allow for the USDA's increase in the release of that type of product. It's going to significantly reduce their cost, overall operating costs, in order to be able to do things like this. And, of course, we all know the food bank has been having an extreme increase in demand. Libby may join us here in a minute if you'd like to ask her questions, I'm not sure if she will or not. She's quite busy, but the ODC did take this as a recommendation for compliance after several questions, many concerns and other things that were addressed by Libby at compliance, and then recommended up to ODC, and it was received and approved to be recommended for approval for council today. I know Councilman Dean was at the compliance committee meeting, and I know that Mr. Sprouls was, and Mr. Shelton, were at the ODC meeting when we met as well. So I'd love to answer any questions concerning that. Legal and I have talked about the amendment and the agreement. It's going to be for three additional, five additional jobs for three years. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
It's Libby, I'm on, sorry.
Okay. Libby is here if you do have specific questions for her. But it is an extension of the contract for four years, for five additional jobs. This is considered an expansion of their facility to increase productivity and capacity, and lower costs, and it will be an extension of their current economic development agreement, which they have met every qualification every year since they've started, and they're on their fourth year of that. So I think I can stop talking there and address any questions or concerns you might have, or Libby can as well, or possibly Legal or anyone else that was attending any of the meetings.
Questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm not sure everybody on the council has seen Libby's letter. Has everybody seen it?
Yes.
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 You have D. Tron, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, never mind, go ahead.
Only thing I wanted to say is, Libby, I appreciate, so this is Stewie, I appreciate so much what you and West Texas Food Bank are doing in the community right now. You really have been a huge challenge, and thank you and your staff for what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you guys very much. As of May the first last month, we did 776,000 pounds. So this month, since we'll be able to be back to concentrating on produce, stew bags and fruit bags, we had to step back from that last month due to the fact that just the amount of pantry boxes we were having to build. We should do, we're estimating close to 850,000, 900,000 pounds for this month alone, because yesterday, the National Guard rode into the West Texas Food Bank, and we have 16 of them building boxes all day, every day. So that is giving my staff a huge break. So we're very happy that Texas Department of Emergency Management and Chief Kidd heard, I think, my yelling last week, and found us guard, and brought them in from Dallas. Yeah, they came in on buses from Dallas on Saturday night.
Fantastic.
Libby, didn't you say that this project, this would take about six weeks if we got on it immediately? And this extra food portionment is going to happen in about eight weeks, is that right? So this could get this built before we start having that need?
It'll take six to eight weeks at the longest. Scott with John Evans has already sent the plan to the manufacturer as of last week, and so we're assuming that everything will go okay. But we should start seeing, the RSP was actually due on Friday to USDA for the COVID-19 produce fresh food boxes. So they will announce the awardees to the distributors, probably sometime in the next two weeks from USDA. And then at that point, the distributors will start building boxes for delivery, and that'll take probably four to five weeks once the distributors know who's been awarded the contracts from USDA. So everything, the COVID boxes should hit between eight and 10 weeks from now. At eight being the earliest, I suspect, because USDA moves like a herd of turtles, it'll be closer to eight to 10 weeks. So it would all fall just right.
Okay, great. I just wanted to, I mean, I know there's some urgency to go ahead and get this approved. Mayor, can we make a motion on this today?
Natasha, can we go ahead and approve this?
Yes.
I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? You got it, Libby.
Thank you, Lib.
Oh, my gosh, you guys are amazing, thank you.
You're amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, for your nimble, yes.
Appreciate it much.
Thank you all so much, have a great day.
Thanks, Wes.
Wes.
And to let you guys know, we will be hiring five new employees, probably starting in the next two or three weeks. We are going to have to add another disaster outreach team, who will be basically dealing with nothing but COVID response, which will have to do with us starting to go into like Pleasant Farms and West Odessa to deal with our kiddos that aren't receiving like Food to Kids Backpack Program and those kinds of things. We will be doing more direct distribution to at-risk children with that disaster team, which is what those five jobs are what we're going to be adding. So it will actually help feed children that are at high risk right now that are not receiving meals, even with the ISVs doing their drive-through, grab and go.
God bless you for doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
To item two, consider approving just a real-time intelligence center for OPD.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's an echo somewhere that I'm hearing.
An echo somewhere.
This purchase is for a real-time crime intelligence center, and basically what that is, is if you've seen movies, it's that bank of television screens, per se, that feeds information to your police department and that sort of thing. But it goes a lot further than that. And we really started looking at something like this on the heels of the August 31st tragedies. What we found on August 31st is it was very difficult for us to pull tons of information together in one place and create a very concise avenue of approach to things. And what this will do will allow us to bring that stuff together in one place, in one room, with all the stakeholders present, with crime analysts there to help us sort through the information. But that's just part of it. It also creates a foundational piece that allows us to bring in, pull in video elements from around the city. Thank Majesty Wood, those companies that allow us to view outside videos from their companies, and so we can see those security videos. Thank, if you would, those town events like the Fourth of July, where we put a camera up and then we can monitor the crowd from this center, those sorts of things. So I think there's a lot of benefit here. When you look at the money involved, the 152,576, 76, those funds were part of the funds that were saved when we came in under budget on our Exxon proposal a few years ago. We make up the shortfall on this with seizure fund. So again, we have dealers helping us pay for this, so that's always a good thing.
Questions from council?
I have a question. Where do you plan to have your real-time intelligence center?
We actually have started some construction, we've removed some offices. If you remember where Narcotics was, at the second floor of the police department, it's in this area.
Oh.
Created a large space that we're going to put that in.
Okay. Did you move Narcotics to another area, or is it going to be incorporated in there?
Narcotics has been moved to a different area, yeah.
Okay, okay, very good.
Other questions?
So Chief, does this amount of money, does that get us through phase one, or does it get us through all of this?
That gets us through phase one. Most of the things moving forward, you know, you look at phase two, and we're already looking at some of the cameras and that sort of thing, we're looking at grants for most of that. I think we've done a really good job with securing grants here, and as we move forward, we've caught up technology-wise where we want to be on a lot of things, and moving forward, this will be our push with, I believe, with grants.
Okay, awesome.
Chief, I have one question. Is this only going to be staffed on an as-needed basis, I presume?
Well, yeah, right now, yes, I mean, but the plan is, the goal is to eventually staff it 24 hours a day.
Okay.
And keep in mind, this is not just a police department thing, this can be used by the fire department on major fires, this can be, I mean, traffic, when you talk about traffic lights and monitoring. This is a foundational piece that can be used.
It can be used multiple use in the city, not just for the police department.
Mara, say something.
I think that was the Reverend, but I did have a question.
I was just saying, I was just saying, Chief, that it can be used multiply, not just for the police department, but all the departments and usable areas, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, there's one more question. The total cost is $169,250. Your police supply cost was 152,576, 76. The $16,673.24 is from the Treasury, right?
That's forfeiture fund, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, I just needed to know what was going on, that's all, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mara.
I read through it, and I may be way off, but I was looking at the capabilities and everything. Do we have a system yet, or will this be anything that can be tied to something where the public can be notified if we have major things happen like the August 31st?
Absolutely, and we're still working with Devin on creating that other system too, so yes. I mean, I would say by the summer, we will have absolute systems in place that will do that.
But it won't tie to this in any way, this is just...
No, it will absolutely tie to this.
Okay, that was my question, thanks, okay. I was just still curious about that and the need to have that for our citizens.
Sure.
And Council, this is Michael. The chief alluded to this earlier, but this is just another element of technology. And thanks to you, we've been able to secure so many things that have made the job of the officer much easier. You know, we unfortunately operated with a shortage of personnel for a long time, and I think the chief would agree that this has allowed us to close the gap, if you will. This is a continuation of things like the ticket writers, license plate readers, all of that, all of those things that contribute to what we call intelligence-based policing. This is just another element of that to make policing a lot easier for our guys.
Well, Chief, I know, this is Peggy, I know that you are, I know how difficult your jobs are, and we're so appreciative, and I think that all the council would agree with me that it is incumbent upon us to provide you and all of our public safety officials with the tools they need to do their job more efficiently and more safely, thank you.
Ma'am, I appreciate your kind words, and I absolutely appreciate that attitude.
Chief, this is Reverend Shelton.
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask a question. When can I take a tour through your facility for myself?
If you want to drive over here right now, I'm going to ask you to wear a mask, but...
He can't leave the meeting.
I just wanted to take a, I've been living here for three years and have not been through your facility yet, I'd just like to go through it.
No, absolutely, anytime, we'll arrange that, just give us a couple...
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Everybody good?
I agree wholeheartedly with Peggy that we need to provide the technology, absolutely. And I agree entirely with this, let's go forward.
Yeah, technology really is a force multiplier. I mean, if we don't have all our people, this really makes you more efficient with the least amount of people. That's what we need to do.
Chief, I have one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
On phase two, you know, where you're going to be looking at cameras and things along that line, do some of our existing cameras, will they be able to be utilized, or will we need to be looking forward to having to replace some?
Well, and that's part of the process, is going to be evaluating those cameras that are in place now to see if we can use those. If not, like I said, we're going to try to use grant funding to fund most of the other cameras that we may need.
Okay.
Thanks. And Chief, I can tell you, I can testify that the ticket writers are much faster when you're getting a ticket.
Oh, that sounds like experienced speaking. Is that experienced, Peggy?
That is experienced speaking.
Research, she was doing research. Hey, everybody good with this item?
Yes, thank you, Chief, for all that you do, and please let your people know that we appreciate everything.
We absolutely will do that, thank you very much.
All right, don't go anywhere, you got one more.
One more.
Consider approving the purchase of a FARO 3D scanner model 35350S. Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, the Ferrell scanner, what that does is it scans crime scenes and fatality accidents. We currently use an older model that is going by the wayside, and this is just, our purpose here is just to upgrade that equipment to get to the point where we have the most modern equipment. This was approved as a supplemental. And because of negotiations with the company, it took this long to get to this point.
Can you come to a demonstration, I know you did that for us in the past?
Sure.
And you can kind of show them how it works, because it's an amazing piece of technology.
I'd like to see that.
It really is. You know, when I started here, if you had, say, a homicide scene or a fatality accident, you mark those scenes and you measure with a measuring tape, and that takes hours and hours and hours. The Ferrell scan it with lasers, and it is able to do that in a very short amount of time.
The amazing thing they showed us on the last one is you could read a patch on their sleeve. You could actually read what it says with the scanners, so it's pretty amazing. Questions?
It sounds like it's something we've already approved, so let's do it.
Yeah.
All righty, Chief Gurkey, thank you very much, and if you could set that up with the Reverend, that way we can get him to get to tour your facility.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item four, discuss opening the city park amenities. Mr. Patton?
Good morning, how is everybody?
Morning, Steve.
Well, this is a hot topic right now across the entire state. We've had a lot of discussions with so many of other departments. And, of course, everybody is waiting on what the next phase of openings is going to consist of from the governor's office. Currently, we do have all of our basketball courts are open, our tennis courts are open, the walking trails are open, open turf areas. We don't have the playgrounds open just as of yet. It is a recommendation from the National Recreation Park Association that the playgrounds not be open until probably the phase two, and we'll see how social distancing is with phase two, when that might be implemented. We don't have any of our youth sports, or the adult sports programs are active because of social distancing and, of course, the group gatherings. And, of course, the hottest topic is our swimming pools, and what the aquatics around the state actually have been going on as far as topics of discussion. And I think some of the most recent surveys have shown that 74% of all of us cities are pretty much waiting to see what the governor is going to announce in the next, I guess, phase two, and how that will affect pool operations. Currently, the governor's specifications are very clear to state that public pools shall remain closed. And I think everybody, of course, is looking at maybe a later opening date if they're opening it at all. And I've talked to, I have a survey of about 16 West Texas and southeastern New Mexico cities, and none of those cities are leaning towards closing the whole summer, but not real sure what they're going to do if there are other changes. They come up with the governor maybe releasing the opening of the pool sooner. So there is a lot that is being weighted down. I did take everything to our consultant that we were looking at as far as our management consulting and operations, and had some real quick answers from them, which I was, I said, well, what if we look at a delayed opening as a possibility? And they said, yes, that they could accommodate that, they're going to have to go up in their price because they know that the revenues will be significantly down if we do open up later because of a shorter season. And there, of course, is definitely a concern about recruitment of staff, especially this late in the season. And then she says, social distancing, if that is going to be a top priority, you know, they will take as many measures as they can as for social distancing, but that is the issue. Everybody has made to note that pool water is safe, and there's no doubt we have the latest in technology as far as monitoring the systems and making sure that our pools maintain the proper chemical analysis, and that's checked on an hourly basis. That's not really the problem, it's the social distancing, and as well as we have 110 lounge chairs, a lot of tables, a lot of chairs. The CDC is recommending a wipe-down every 30 minutes of a lot of those, of all your countertops. We have a staff of about 20 kids that we put in lifeguard positions. The break room is about a 12-by-12 air-conditioned room. So dealing with a limitation of the people entering the swimming pools, they do want to look at a 50% reduction of the crowd capacity, and if we do have a line, they're going to have to wait outside and social distance there. So there was a lot of things that we were looking at as far as our operations, if we did look at the option to open later in the season. And also the spray grounds, we were very worried about our spray grounds and the social distancing issue. If there's anything, every kid crowds underneath those big splash buckets that we've got, and that's almost impossible for us to try to keep kids from social distancing. I'm not even sure that some of them would know what six feet really is, when you start talking about kids having fun.
Absolutely.
There's our biggest concern, of course, it is the patrons that visit our swimming pools, those are children and their families. And we've been talking about discussions of the protocol, of what would happen if we did have a lifeguard that came up and tested positive or did get sick. And the infection rate of children and families is, of course, one of our biggest concerns, and the safety, health, welfare of the public that attend. We are a babysitting service for so many people that just drop their kids off, and we end up babysitting for the day, and that's a concern too. If they can't get in the pool, they don't social distance. And the worry is, of course, and concern that we all have is times are different than what they used to be as far as our pool operations of the aquatic facilities. And I think there is a pretty well-known danger that's out there. I don't see the virus cases going down, and there's, I think, the added costs they're going to charge, and that's a big concern for me also, that they're looking at more disinfecting, more wiping down of the facilities, more cleaning, and that's just going to be mandated, and it's going to have to happen. And then they'll take some questions at the entrance of the typical questions that they're asking everybody. They also have a temperature check that they'll hit all the kids with and patrons. But there are some safeguard measures that the group is coming forth with, and I think that's a good idea, and I appreciate their effort, but they said they do need to know as soon as possible if there is any plan for us to open our swimming pools and spray grounds. And I told them, I said, well, we've publicly stated that we're not going to open, I said, but there is some discussion that there could be some consideration and change that. So I did want to kind of have a discussion if there was any concerns that we might need to really reconsider and head off in a different direction. If that was a desire that everybody wanted to go, then I'll jump on that and get things moving and shaken. Or do we stick to our guns and look at the situation, and maybe wait to see what the governor has to say in the next phase, and depend on what his mandates are and how that would affect our operations?
I think for sure we need to wait to see what the governor says in his next phase, but also Dr. Sarah Vannan with RMC made it very clear it was not the water, but the social distancing. And my concern, as Steve has stated, is that the kids will not, you know, it's fun, you don't think about it, am I six feet apart? And that's going to be an issue, and that's what Dr. Sarah Vannan stated was the main issue, was that they still needed to social distance, and I just don't see how we could make that happen, you know, with kids. Maybe it's possible, I don't know. And also with having to count the number of kids that can come in at a time, and you've got a line waiting in the parking lot, well, the parents cannot drop the kids off, they've got to make sure that those kids are staying six feet apart, even in that line. And I don't know that, you know, if they don't, what happens if they drop them off? You know, then who do we use to make sure they're social distancing? You know, I was thinking when we first closed the pools that it may have been a little bit prematurely, but I did not fully understand and see now how the virus is just, we are not anywhere near a peak, I don't believe. You know, we just continue to see it, and we're trying to prepare for school to open back up, hopefully in August, and if the kids become sick and the parent, you know, it's a lot to think about. If we open late, then you're closer to school starting.
Other comments?
The only thing I was curious about, and, you know, I mean, thank God, we have gone for several days now without new cases, and we sure don't want to ruin that, but we have new cases now.
Yeah, we're up to 84.
Okay, well, that includes though the three that were probables, right, in the 70, when they were saying 78, it was only 81? Yeah, okay.
And a few more they've caught.
Yeah, okay, so, but what I was curious about, and I agree, I mean, we need to do whatever, we need to follow the governor's protocol. If we did decide that something could happen, maybe in July, because it's so hot here and maybe we feel like we have peaked, wouldn't opening the spray grounds be an easier thing to do than the pools? In other words, agreeing that the pools are closed, but potentially the spray grounds could be open?
Yes, that is an option, and as a matter of fact, I did talk to the consultant about that also. We do have to have lifeguards at UTPB Sprayground because of the standing water that's in the splash downs for the slides. But then again, our biggest concern and biggest problem is going to be that the kids won't social distance.
I know, I know that, but I'm saying, if we waited till, if in fact, by July, we didn't have that restriction, I'm just trying to see... July, we didn't have that restriction, I'm just trying to see if there would be something that sort of last minute, we could open for kids.
Yes.
And it seems like the spray grounds would be one of those things.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, yes. And would be a good option, too.
Yeah. So based on that, it seems like that, that right now, we definitely are gonna keep the swimming pools closed, where everything's closed right now, depending on what happens and how well people do on this social distancing in the next six weeks. And with the governor's orders, we could know that we don't have to decide today to, it wouldn't, if we didn't decide today, it would not eliminate the possibility of maybe opening the spray grounds for a month in the summer.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes. Other questions?
I do, I have a question. Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Are we formally obligated to the company out of Garland to run our pools?
Absolutely not.
The phone's ringing. Yeah, if somebody would mute their microphone just so it doesn't disturb everybody, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Anyway.
We don't have any type of executed contract with them. And so, and our spray grounds requiring just four guards, Scott and I would even have some discussions about even maybe trying that maybe in-house. We're not real sure, but that might be something that we might have to look at and consider.
Well, I've got a real problem with the, with the company indicating that they would have to charge us more or charge more for this or that for a shorter season. That doesn't make a tremendous amount of sense to me. But anyway, kind of, I go along with what Peggy was saying as well, of perhaps later in the summer, we can look at some options, even if it's not seven days a week or, you know, something along that line, and have to do that in-house. Don't have a heart attack, Steve. I'm not, I'm just talking.
Got it, ready.
But, and, you know, the issue of requiring children to social distance, I think, is not reasonable. I think that once we get to the point where we think we can open the pools, it would be to open the pools, perhaps limit attendance, but open the pools. Yeah, and, I mean, I, I am not, I am not discounting the severity of this illness. My concern is that we will go to such an extreme with it, that we're trying to alter everything, you know, in our community. And I don't know that our community is accepting of that. And so, anyway, neither here nor there, like I said, just, that's what I'm kind of thinking is, perhaps there's something that we can do that's, would still provide some pool activities, particular days, particular numbers, and, you know, we'll just have to see what the governor does.
And I think that's pretty much what the entire state's waiting on, is to see what the next phase is gonna consist of.
Right.
And it's really, it's a huge impact on everyone's operations. I mean, we're, he has special specifications for operations of the golf course, and, and we've been dealing with that, and, and I, I hope that he will have something that is very selective as far as specifications towards the operations of public swimming facilities, because I think that's important to every city that I've talked to. We're always just waiting on what, what we can do and to the degree that we can deal with the specifications. And then, of course, lifeguard recruitment, I've talked to some of the parents, and they're like, I'm not letting my kid work there this week, not, not this year, not with the, so...
Yeah, you know, we'll just kinda have to see where we are.
Yeah, and it's really is.
I think that is, that is really pretty, maybe what's on most people's minds for right now, but a month from now, it may be different.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just, like I said, and also considering what the mayor has said throughout this month, and, you know, in dealing with the may, other mayors from West Texas, you know, we're unique in, in our area, and, and we have been fortunate in our community that we were not hit as, as hard as we had planned. And so, you know, even if Austin or Dallas decide to not open their pools, then that doesn't necessarily, you know, mean that we should go that same route.
I agree, it's something that we have to follow very closely. My real concern, and I like, I understand that the kids need to get out, and I, and I want them to be able to. I guess, from my other hat that I put on as a teacher, is that the, the longer we, you know, if we go into late July or at that point, we have to think about, I know the parents want out, and I know the kids want out, but that we also want them back in school, and we want them back in school healthy. And school would probably start in, you know, it normally starts in August, so if you open and get to, you know, maybe nothing will happen. I hope no viruses will be spread, but should they, then we have to look at school, because they've been out of school a long time, and we do wanna get them back in school in August.
That's true. Well, the reality is, we can't do anything about it today, because there's a lot of limitations. So it's nice to know what the options on time might be if, if something did open up.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Other questions, other comments, questions? Thank you, Mr. Patton.
Absolutely. We're monitoring closely and talking to as many people as we can to try to get a good game plan for the entire state. I'm on a panel, and will be visiting with Texas Recreation Park Society today, and, and the seniors directors are kinda on a panel, not that I haven't been around here for a while, but, but they're, they're asking questions on what some of the seasoned directors are doing around the state. So I'll kinda know the latest and the greatest around the entire state of what everybody's gonna be doing over the next week.
Please keep us posted.
I love that. I love that word. I'm gonna start feeling seasoned instead of old.
And on that note, I guess we can end. All right. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Number five, discuss the CARES funding. Marita.
Michael, do we have Marita? Is there Marita?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We're up at our item.
Yes. This, I wanted to kinda give you a little overview of the CDBG CV funds that the city is receiving as part of the CARES Act. CDBG funding was in the amount of five billion dollars under the CARES Act, and the city is receiving five hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars in the first round of allocation. There's three allocation rounds for this five billion dollars. Second round will go to the states, for the states to distribute how they want to distribute it. The third round is going to be allocated based on the city's needs. This funding is in addition to our regular CDBG funding that we will, that we're receiving for 2020, home funding, have another eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, six hundred ninety-three dollars in CDBG money, and two hundred and sixty-nine thousand and sixty-two dollars in home money. CDBG CARES Act funding has some flexibility. We, we will request waivers to meet some of these, the flexibility. We only have to publish our public notice and notify the public of what we're going to do with the funds for five days. We are allowed to do virtual public hearings. It has extended the deadline for our annual action plan to 2021, rather than August of 2020. We will be able to cover costs that we've already incurred, depending on what we choose to use the money for. It eliminates the fifteen percent cap on public service activities. We also can use some of our two thousand, fiscal year 2019 and 2020, CDBG allocations to address the virus, effects of the virus in the community. Now, all of the funding has, still has the requirement of the CDBG fund that it has to be spent for the low to moderate income citizens or areas in the community. We have already gone in and amended our citizen participation plan to allow us to do the five-day comment period and to do virtual public hearings. We will, as we proceed, we're going to request waivers from HUD to utilize all the flexibility that they are allowing. We don't know for sure what the total flexibility will be until the, it is published in the federal register. Most cities are waiting to see what that will be in order to determine how they're going to spend their funds. Some of the eligible activities that the funds can be spent for is for rent and utilities. It's free, up to three months of a hundred percent of the cost of the rent and their utilities. I do know the Housing Authority has over three hundred and fifty people on their waiting list. We have, of course, Meals on Wheels, that would be another type of eligible activity, and they have fifty-eight new clients that they have seen come on since the virus has hit the community. Also, Family Promise is working with some families that have lost their, their home and their place to live. Other types of eligible activities include providing broadband internet in low-income areas so that students who are having to do homework from home have access to, to do that. We do have three census tracts in Odessa, census tract eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, that where twenty-four percent of the families of the households in that area do not have internet service. And also, those are the low, are some of the low-income census tracts, all qualify with fifty-one percent or more of the citizens living in that area as being low-income. We have COVID-19 tests is also eligible. You do have the requirement that they have to be low to moderate income, but when you go to nursing homes and do testing, that qualifies by the virtue of them being elderly or disabled. That's a presumed benefit, that they are presumed to be low-income. Meals on Wheels clients also fit that category. You can go to the, like that tax credit apartment complexes, and with the cooperation of the managers, you can get income verification there and provide the testing at those, and then you can actually income-qualify people if you so choose. Other activities are services to the small business, small businesses in town. You can provide working capital in order for them to retain jobs, but the jobs have to be for the low mod people that they're retaining. You also can go in and find an empty building and rehab the facility to, so you can provide treatment at that facility, you can isolate patients at that facility, and you can use it to expand the hospital's capacity. There are not many cities out there who have already decided what to use their funding on. I did some research and found some, some communities and what they're doing right now. Amarillo is using their funding to provide some housing for, what they've done is they've taken clients from the Salvation Army, they've moved them to hotels, and they're, so they can social distance, and they provided them the funding to cover the cost of those hotels and to help feed them. Another community is Alexandria, Virginia, and they are providing rental assistance. They have a program set up to provide rental assistance to have experienced the loss of income, and they're, they're paying, you pay directly to the landlord, so it doesn't go to the person as well, so you know that the, it's actually being, the funds are actually being paid. The tenants can apply, or the landlords can apply for the tenants to, for the funding. Again, it's a maximum of three months of assistance that can be provided. Seattle, Washington, they are doing something different. They're providing funding to small businesses to help stabilize them. They do it, they're doing a grant, and it can be up to ten thousand dollars to, in order to help them sustain the businesses and, and keep their employees on a payroll. And then we have La Crosse, Wisconsin, they are also doing a small business loan program that, where they are providing, I believe theirs is a maximum, I think, five thousand dollars per ten employees. So if you only have ten employees, they would do five thousand dollars. Most of these are grants, and expect the businesses to pay them back as long as they maintain and keep those employees employed during this period of time. Dallas is doing emergency rental assistance, again, that's three months, and then they're also doing a small business grant program. That's just kind of an overview of what can be done with the funding. We just kinda wanted to give you an update on what the funding is and see what you guys would, get some direction from you guys, or some guidance on what you would like to see done with the funding.
Marita, can you send this out to all of us? That way we get the...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I can, I've got the PowerPoint, I can send it out.
Questions or comments?
Marita, did you say that this first phase was the five hundred thousand-ish amount?
Yes.
Okay.
First phase.
And so, do you, or do cities then anticipate additional funds, or does it depend on how we utilize thousands?
In the third phase, it is based on how severely the communities have been impacted by the virus, is my understanding.
That makes sense.
So, Marita, did you say you're going to come up with some ideas for this, I mean, what's the step, what, what are you gonna do now to sort, to determine how you think we should utilize it?
Well, we wanted to get some guidance from, from council as to how they'd like to see it spent. We can also go out and do a public hearing and see how the community would like to have it spent. We could do the same thing like we're doing with our CDBG funds and put an application out there, so organizations could apply for the funding. So it's, it's really how you guys would like us to proceed.
Well, does this have to go, I mean, to organizations, for instance, like these rents and utilities for three, you know, for three months? Wouldn't those go to individual people?
Yes, but, but what I, what I was thinking is you would need someone to manage the money, you know, to do, you know, to verify and qualify people.
Okay, okay.
So, I mean, it would be easier to go through an organization that, that was set up already to do rental assistance. I mean, we could handle it in the office, it's, but we, we are kinda short-staffed.
Okay. On the broadband internet, do I understand that this money could be used in addition to what we were talking about, about putting up those temporary poles for the west side so we could, in all these areas that don't have internet?
We, we cannot duplicate, we cannot duplicate service. That was just one of the suggestions that was, was out there. You know, if you, if it's being paid for by somebody else, we cannot pay for it.
Okay, well, I didn't know that was actually being paid for yet, but, okay.
Well, it's in the process. James Beecham with Motran put together the internet study, and they were waiting for that. And so, I know that's in the process and being talked about by the school district and had talked about bringing... talked about bringing part of it to O D C.
Okay, yeah, I know that. I just didn't know if this could, if, if that project is going to reach all of these places, like she's identified three specific areas that have, that really need broadband. I mean, maybe, maybe that needs already being filled. We'll just have to wait and see. I was just curious. I, I know, for one, I would like some suggestions from you because it seems to me, well, have your ear to the ground and you know a lot of things. I'm sure there are things that you have said, wow, if I just had another half a million dollars, we could do this. And if there are those things, I would like those to be put in the mix for what we could do with it.
I see a great need, housing assistance, for rental assistance, and I see a great need for food. Those are the two things I, I hear the most about.
Peggy, I think you make a really good point, and that is, we need to really look at what services are already being provided and understand and figure out where the city can fill that gap. I think that the staff, Marita, myself, and Philip can come up, look at what's being done, and then provide the council recommendations or suggestions on where to best use the dollars. So one example might be, if we don't think that there's enough testing that's occurring in the community, well, these funds are actually available to, to be used for that purpose. So we will look at all those things and develop a, a list of items that you can consider.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah.
I agree. I'd also check with the nonprofits out there, Michael. I mean, there's, you know, as we learned from the food bank today, the things that they're facing, I think those are things we need to kind of just investigation, see if they're really suffering and where the aspects we could come in and maybe help. I agree. We just need, we need some ideas. We can't get it all.
You know, Marita and I talked, Marita and I talked about this yesterday. We still don't know, for example, we know that the Housing Authority got some dollars for administrative purposes, but we, we also hear and understand that they're going to get, probably get some significant dollars for rental assistance, so we'll need to understand because we don't want to duplicate if there's money coming in for those purposes. So we'll do the same with the food bank and other organizations.
Great, that's super. Thank y'all.
Michael, when you say it is the Housing Authority, are you talking about H F C?
No, sir. That, no, sir, that's totally different. This is the Odessa Housing Authority. They provide Section Eight rental assistance to low income residents. That's their sole purpose.
So if we enlisted Odessa Housing Finance to help us with screening those rent applications, would that be a duplication of services?
No, sir. I think we, the, if we were going to enlist someone to assist this, it would probably be the Housing Authority, primarily because they've already got a system in place for how they do that, that would follow, follow all of HUD's guidelines.
But is that not a duplication of services?
Again, and I, that's, that's why I think we, we would need to understand what rental resources are going to come down and, and determine whether or not that's the best use for the city dollars.
So, right now, you're thinking that you and Marita and a couple of other of your staff will be analyzing the situation?
Yes, sir. We need a, again, I think it's important for us not to duplicate services, so if there's money coming to the Housing Authority for rental assistance, I'm not too sure that that's necessarily where our focus should be, but we will look at all of those areas and give the council a slate of, of recommendations, and then I'm certain that you will hear from the nonprofit community as well as to what their needs are also.
And we're doing a virtual thing tomorrow. It's, it's mainly for the C D B G funds, the annual allocation. We're trying to, giving out some technical assistance since things have changed on how, how we're, how we're doing things with the, you know, the virus. We're not having that one-on-one contact, and we're changing the way they're, they're submitting their applications. So we're having kind of a technical assistance hearing tomorrow afternoon, and a lot of them are going to be on that, so we can gather information from them during that, that hearing.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Marita.
Thank you.
Adam Sis, Adam Six, discuss COVID nineteen antibody testing for first responders.
Mayor, City Council.
Good morning.
The, yeah, I will talk briefly about this, and I've got Jason Cooper here with me also, and he can go into more of the science and the medicine part. He's been phenomenal helping us with, through this process. Texas Tech Health and Science Center has been a nonprofit, and they have provided all of our medical direction and supervision for free. So we've been doing the nasal swabs. The City of Odessa, Odessa Fire Rescue, Ector County, Texas Tech, U T P B, E C I S D, we've put together quite the planning process and the operational process for the nasal swabs. Started that last week. We're, we're doing around eleven to fifteen a day. We haven't even reached our max capacity yet, but it is available out there for the community, and we have put it out there. It's been going really, really smooth on our side. We just aren't quite seeing the numbers we'd like to, and even on the nasal swabs, you know, you have to be in that epidemiological period of five to eleven days to test positive, whatever that is. And if you test negative, you're kind of back to ground zero. So I am super excited, as a lot of people are, about the antibody testing, and we got to make sure we're clear that we're calling it any, antibody testing. This is not immunity testing, but when you have the antibodies, you've been exposed because eighty percent of the people that get this exposure, this COVID nineteen, don't even know it. So we, we feel like there's a, there's definitely a percentage of the population that have already been exposed. According to those numbers, we just, this would be a really good snapshot to see what that number is. We would be one of the first communities in West Texas to do it. We're excited about that. The National Guard and the Army came in on Saturday, and they tested eighty-four folks through our site, and it was one of the best sites they have seen in the state of Texas yet. I think this is a great advantage. It's forty-three dollars a test, which is a phenomenal price. That is just the, the lab cost and that the, the, the testing kit. We wouldn't have to pay for anything else. Odessa Fire Rescue paramedics are doing the blood draws, or they could do the nasal swabs. We've got a great plan in place. I've heard from the county that they are approved to send their first responders through, and we're looking at doing this in about a week period. Just real briefly, the City of Odessa first responders, we figured up about four hundred and fifty people, and that would be, that, the cost would only be nineteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for that. So me personally, we feel like that is very much worth it to help us get a better picture of how Ector County and Odessa, Texas has actually been affected and exposed to COVID nineteen. And that is pretty much just my brief synopsis of this, and then I will turn it over to Jason Cooper. Anybody have any questions for me?
I have one, and I don't know if you can answer it or if Jason will need to, but I've, on the testing, from what I've understood, because you know Midland is testing, Midland Fire, and that there's basically four separate tests. One shows that if you currently have it, one, if you've had it within a short period of time, and I don't remember all of the issues, and one, of course, would be the antibody test to show if you had ever received, or if you'd ever contracted. Is that what this will be also, or is it just for the forty-two thirteen? Is it, is it just, do you currently have it, or have you ever had it?
I'll turn, that's a good question. I'll turn this over to Jason Cooper, who's our Assistant Medical Director at Odessa Fire Rescue and also with Texas Tech Special Ops.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Good morning, Council. Thank you for listening to our proposal this morning. There's a good question. When you talk about antibody testing, I know a lot of people who are not in the medical field can sometimes get a little bit confused or sidetracked by the terminology, so I kind of focus this in for you a little bit. The specific test we're proposing to do is the I G G antibody, which is going to indicate past exposure to COVID nineteen. People who are displaying symptoms or have active infections, we do the nasal swab, that's a P C R test, and that actually just checks for active disease. We're focusing more on a prevalent study, which is going to actually let us know just the impact that it's had on our first responder community. So to answer your question specifically, the other types of I G G antibodies, they're in different stages of development to also look for active disease, but it's really not the gold standard for active disease. The nasal swab is. This is actually the way to go to look for potential infection, if that, if that helps answer your question.
Yes, yes.
Other questions?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to, this is Peggy, Chief. I just wanted to tell you, because we haven't actually seen you since the E O C actually started and all the work you all have done, and I just want to tell you that we think you've done a yeoman's job on that, and we are so appreciative.
Thank you very much, Peggy. It's, it's because of Jason Cooper and all the other people on our team that we were able to do really well here in Odessa, Texas, and I think compared to other communities, our numbers have been pretty good, so thank you.
Well, you all and your team have really made the city proud, so thank you again.
Other questions or comments?
I guess my only other, and I know it's a medical term, we're using the word antibody, but I guess what I need to hear is what way this will help us in regards to what we find, what results are. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I don't know if you had the opportunity to read kind of some of the information that was sent out before the meeting, specifically that I put together on this, but what it does, it's going to actually let us know who's been exposed to it. Now, there are, in the medical field, it takes eighteen months to two years sometimes to actually develop a vaccine, and it takes that much time to kind of figure out what an appropriate level of antibody test is in order to say that someone is immune from COVID nineteen. It is believed that you develop some immunity to COVID nineteen after you've been exposed to it. So a positive antibody test in this situation would show, hey, you've been exposed to this, and it is believed that you may have some level of immunity. Now, that level of immunity is going to be debated for quite some time. It takes time in order to establish what level of exposure you have to have to develop long-term immunity to, to COVID nineteen. What this does for us right now, it lets us know how, what the prevalence of this has already been on our community, and those go into the bigger decision-making processes by the health authority that advises bodies just like you what to expect going forward. It lets us know that if we've already had, just say hypothetically, fifty percent exposure rate through our community, because we can extrapolate this data on a second phase and do community-based sampling as well, but if you were to say you've already been affected, this community's already been affected, and fifty percent of the people have been exposed to that, well, that's kind of a game changer in the way you plan moving forward, because if fifty percent of the population has been exposed, and I've only had a total of eighty-one cases, and by the way, there's only twenty-six of those are active at any given time, and we only have three people in the hospital today for it, then that's a pretty good, pretty good way to move forward on how we move if the other fifty percent gets affected. We kind of know what the attack rate is to some extent. Now, there's other variables that go in there based on who gets it and what are the comorbidities, et cetera, and those are, you know, larger discussions than the purpose of this meeting right today. But you can see, the more data you have on this, the better it is to advance the conversation moving forward as a community and where we're at. And the reason we're focusing on first responders in this first study is because that's the frontline health worker. It's part of your critical infrastructure of your community. There is some precedent for this. The University of Arizona, as the state of Arizona and the University of Arizona, just committed three point five million dollars to test all two hundred and fifty thousand first responders in the state of Arizona, because they're really wanting to get a prevalent study on where this, where this goes across the, the community. So, does that kind of help answer you, sir?
It, it does, thank you.
You bet.
Hey, City Council, Mayor, Mr. Marrero, City Management, this is Chief Alvarez. Hey, so we, we, we had come up with a figure, Mr. Marrero, if you remember, we, we looked at four hundred and fifty personnel. That would include our police department, our fire department, public safety communications. So we're looking at the ballpark around four hundred and fifty personnel. The cost was going to be anywhere from nineteen, upwards, up to nineteen thousand, just north of nineteen thousand.
And we are set up currently, we're doing nasal swabs. We have our paramedic scheduled down there. I think this would be an excellent opportunity for the City of Odessa to take advantage of this opportunity, and we are definitely ready to move forward with your blessings.
Cindy, do...
Go, sorry. Go ahead.
Cindy, do we have a slush fund, a miscellaneous that we can pay this out of?
I was going to ask, I was going to ask Peggy if we could use the money from Marita since it's COVID related.
Yeah, we probably...
It has to be low income.
But I thought she said that has to be low income.
That's correct, Peggy. So to answer your question, we, we do have a contingency fund that we could look into. We could look into, if there's any salary savings in the fire department, we will find the twenty thousand dollars. That's not going to be a, a major issue.
Absolutely. Well, I would...
Time frame, forgetting this.
I have a question, and Michael, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but if we have our, and I'm very much in favor of, of proceeding with this. If we have a first responder that has positive test results, what would, if, if their family member was wanting to be tested, does our insurance cover that, or how, what could the next step be?
Yes, ma'am. So yes, if they're a member of the City of Odessa, whether they're in the fire department or not, and their physician feels that they need to be tested, that cost is going to be covered by the city's insurance.
Okay, but that would be if they were symptomatic. What if, like their, their result on the antibody test is positive, is there any need or interest in, in testing their family to see if, if they would also test positive for the antibody, or is that just, is that reaching too far?
Well, I'm not too sure that I'm qualified to answer that from a medical standpoint, Deidra.
Jason, are you still on?
Yes, ma'am, and I can answer that question. So right now, antibody testing is available through many of the private clinics in town, so if that was something that was determined, was desired by a family member of one of our first responders who tested positive, to see if they were exposed as well, then I think that's an individual decision they could make, and I do agree with, with their physician on, on guidance on that. The purpose of this study is really limited to our first responders, but I think that's an excellent question.
Okay.
Other questions?
I have two questions. First of all, what's the timeframe? Then do we have the staff to analyze the data?
Yes, and actually, we're working this in conjunction with our health authority here, the Kinnney Health Authority. They're actually, we, I proposed this to, to that agency first to see if this would be helpful in the health authority gauging prevalence of COVID nineteen in our community. I think every one of us has heard path stories about people who said that they were sick this year, went to the doctor, they got negative flu tests, et cetera. You know, there's a lot of different trains of thought that this has moved through in different ways through our community previously, and most of those are anecdotal. This is the first time we're going to actually start to actually track to see who has been exposed to this. So the health authority and the, the, all the entities that Chief Huber had mentioned earlier, between Texas Tech providing the medical direction, we are, we are collecting this data in a logical way, so this is much different than individuals going out to random urgent cares and getting the test. We're going to have the aggregate data available, and it will be available to you guys as well. We're not holding this back. You'll be able to see what percentage of your first responders have had exposure to this, as well as, each agency here will have that information, so that's kind of the direction we're trying to head with it.
So Mr. Marrero, is this, I know you haven't had a chance to discuss with the council yet, but do you think this is something that we can, you know, speaking on behalf of Chief Gurk and Michelle Rock and... you know, speaking on behalf of Chief Gurk and Michelle Rock and Dispatch, do you think this is something that we can probably move forward with?
Well, Chief, I'm just extrapolating from what I'm hearing from the council, and, and I just simply wanted them to be aware of what we were thinking. So based on that, I think we will proceed with it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
COVID-19 update, Jason Cooper.
Actually, I think, I don't know what that was listed separately. I didn't make the agenda. I think my part was covered with, with Chief Huber, sir.
Are there any questions from council members on COVID? What's going on, or anything?
I do. Jason, did you say of the 84 that we have, were there 20-some-odd that were still listed active or symptomatic, or whatever the terminology be?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. When you look at the, the data, it's important to not just look at the total number as the guide of where we're at. That's a case count. We try to look at the number of active cases, and so when you take away the number that have recovered versus active cases, that leaves us with about 26 known active cases in the community.
Okay. And so do you keep, do you still consider them known active until they're 10 days without symptom? Is that correct?
You know, I, I think that's really more of a question for the, the health authority to, to track on that. Typically, what they do is there is a time window. I believe it's 14 days plus 10 days absent symptoms for total recovery. But there are some varying interpretations of that, and I would refer that question to Dr. Benton at the Health Authority.
Okay. And, and then the only other thing that I had, and I don't know if you can answer this, or if it is a health department, but I know that the paper has record, has reported on clusters, and that it appears that many of our numbers are within the same household. Is that what you've understood on this?
Ma'am, ma'am, I don't think I could speak on behalf of the Health Authority. I don't, I don't know that data. I don't, I don't have that. I don't have access to that data set to be able to report that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Deidra, I think what we can try and do is, is ask someone from the Health Department to address the council next time. We'll certainly make an effort.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Mayor, do you have any updates that might be helpful for us?
What they're, yeah, what they've been saying about the, they do have to wait 10 days before they're deemed cured or recovered. And so that does kind of lean the numbers, because you have to wait those 10 days. So that number's always going to be a little bit lagging. Really? All right, somebody's typing, and we need to make sure we mute that. But one of the things we're watching is that five to seven days for incubation of coronavirus. To start looking at that and see how it's going in our community, because it really, you're going to need a week to week and a half before we really know. And then the governor's coming out with his next recommendation. Not hearing anything. I talked to Mayor Peyton yesterday. He hasn't heard anything from the governor's office. So we're still kind of in the dark as far as where they're going statewide and what the governor's going to do. So we're kind of just in a holding pattern right now until we see it. I know there are some concerns with some of the grocery stores and things, and I'm going to have Michael just have staff go check them out. But we really haven't any, any problems with the businesses other than the gym. They've written tickets. You know, kind of, they go out first, and they will warn and say, you know, you need to watch this behavior. You're supposed to be closed. You need to be closed. And then they will write tickets and slowly take it up. So our people are giving them every chance they can to correct it. They just, some people choose not to. And so I think you saw what happened with the sheriff's office yesterday. That, those people were actually protesting in the city over by Anytime Gym, you know, with the ARs and things like that. So that was a concern. But the sheriff was actually able to arrest them because they were on the bar, property, parking lot with weapons, and that's, that's illegal. So I think there is going to be a protest this week or today at the courthouse, from what I've heard, but I haven't confirmed that. But as far as coronavirus, we're just, you know, kind of watching the numbers to see. Our numbers are still lagging a little bit, because we only get results on certain days, typically for the privates, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And so that's why you will usually see, towards the end of the week, you'll see a jump. But, you know, we're very proud of the city. Amarillo is having a horrible problem. There are over 1,000 cases right now. I talked to Mayor Peyton yesterday, the Midland, the nursing home that's had the problems, the state's actually come in to handle that. And so I think states actually may be in Abilene. I'm sure they're in Amarillo. They're in Midland. So right now, we don't have the state in here mandating anything as far as, you know, certain business or anything. So very proud of the community. We just need to keep telling them, keep doing what they're doing, and recommend wearing face masks.
Mayor, I also noticed a lot of questions about the game rooms, and I heard, or I saw something typed or something that the county judge has said that they can open. Is that?
Not the county judge, the county.
County attorney, maybe.
County attorney. What it says is, it says video arcades. Well, from my understanding, he deems that as video game rooms we used to have back in the 80s. Well, all of the game rooms are very similar. I mean, basically look like an arcade. You know, you're sitting at a CRT, and Natasha felt like that was the game rooms, and so we have kept them closed. So, you know, we're getting a little bit of heat because the county has opened them. But that's these interpretation of the law.
Okay. This is Natasha. We actually contacted TDEM yesterday, and we're waiting on an answer from them about that specific question. But the way I interpret it, I would say that game rooms are closed.
Right, okay.
Other questions? We'll move to number eight. Discuss future scheduling, council briefing, work sessions, and city council meetings. Mr. Marrero.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I certainly wanted to have just a discussion with the council about your sentiments. I know things are far from normal. It might be some time before we actually get there. I know that many of you are itching to get back in, and some of you are a bit more reluctant. I want to be respectful of everyone's thoughts and ideas. So my, my, my intent with this item is just to really have a discussion of what the council as a whole, and what direction generally you would want to go into as we continue. We have to obviously conduct city business. But is that a format in which we go back to the way we were, or is that some sort of hybrid of what we are, have been doing? I will say that while technology at times has not cooperated, this has been a, a form that has allowed us to, to continue working. So thank you for your patience. Thank you for your understanding, and thank you for embracing this technology. It works pretty good. I think it's obviously the safest way to keep everyone protected. But as things begin to open, and as more businesses open, and there's a greater expectation that folks will want to be, be eye to eye, I simply, as I mentioned, wanted to have this discussion and just get your thoughts and ideas. That way, the staff and myself can have some direction on how you would like to proceed with future meetings.
Anybody like to comment?
I would really, I'm one of those Michael knows that are itching to get back in. But I do recognize that we need to do what we are asking our citizens to do. So I would suggest that for our next two meetings, we continue to do them like we're doing them now. And our, our, in two weeks, that meeting, we will be able to discuss what the governor did on the day before. And then potentially maybe go to something like our workshops are done virtually, and our council meetings are done in person, or something like that. But for the next two weeks, I think as much as I would like to not do this, I think we should continue this until, through the 19th, till we can discuss what the governor does on the 18th.
I would agree.
I would agree.
I would agree. Just until we know how the community is going to react from a illness standpoint going forward, I think we're still a little early in that process. So I'd agree.
I think we need to be cautiously going forward, just like we're doing right now. Agree entirely.
Anybody else comment or anything? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion in second. All in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Stay safe.